Good morning. I'm going to call the meeting to order. The continuance of special meeting of the When We're Planning Commission, which originally convened on November 1st, 2024, will now come to order. It's Monday, March 10th, 2025. The time is 9:07 a.m. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. This meeting will end promptly at noon. Good morning, everybody, and thank you for taking the time to come to the When We're Planning Commission meeting. A little housekeeping, please turn off or silence your cell phones. Public restrooms are located in the middle of the building on the Makai side. If there's anyone here in person who would like to testify, please fill out the yellow sign up form at the staff table over by the door. Also, if you have any written testimony that has not been sent in earlier, you may submit that to staff now. I would like to start by introducing the When We're Planning Commissioners. Vice Chair Chantal Perrin. Commissioner. Thank you. Commissioner Wayne DeLuce. Commissioner Gordon Takaki.
Good morning.
Commissioner Lauren Baylog is absent and is accused, and I am Chair Louis Daniele III. We have quorum to hold this meeting. And we also have ex-officiato Commissioner, Director of Public Works Hugh Ono is also present. Thank you. Also present Deputy Corporate Counsel Susanna Tiapula, who is the attorney for the commission and is present to advise the commission on legal matters. And Planning Director Jeffrey Darrell is present to advise the commission on planning matters should they have any questions. The Planning Director. The Planning Director is representing the Planning Department. It is not a member of the Planning Commission. Commissioners, please confirm that you have the opportunity to review materials related to the agenda being reviewed this morning. I just need a verbal. I note that each commissioner has verbally confirmed having had the opportunity to review the materials, including all submitted public testimony related to the agenda item being reviewed today. The purpose of this public meeting is to afford all interested persons a reasonable opportunity to commit to comment on the County of Hawaii General Plan 2045, final recommended draft dated July 2024, and for the commission to review the draft plan and provide its recommendation to the county council by March 24th, 2025. The format of today's meeting will include a presentation by Planning Department staff, followed by public testimony, and then commissioners may ask questions of staff, discuss and take action on the draft plan. At in its November 4th, 2024 meeting, the commission made a motion to provide a favorable recommendation to the county council on the draft plan. This motion will remain open until the last meeting on the draft plan, allowing commissioners to make subsidiary motions if they want to change the draft plan by adding, deleting or replacing language. At the last meeting for review of the draft plan, the commission will vote on main motions to forward its recommendation to county council. The draft general plan and today's agenda can be found on the Planning Commission's website by searching online for Hawaii County Planning Commission or going to the website address posted on the agenda. At this time, I would like to call up Hugh Ono. And I think he's going to address some issues that some of you may have concerns with. Thank you.
Thank you, and let me identify myself. I'm Hugh Ono, the Director of Public Works with the County of Hawaii. And I believe I have encouraging news. Closer? Okay, better? Okay. On the Puna alternate road study. It's our intention. I believe this will address a lot of concern by the Department of Homeland and its beneficiaries in the area. We have really no intention of going through Hawaiian homelands. We may have to study that route just because we have to include in the study. But I have worked on this issue before when I was a district engineer with the Department of Transportation here with the highways division and trying to put a route through the Waimea community through, they call it the Waimea bypass. And the only way that we would pursue this if there's a desire by the Department of Hawaiian Homelands and its beneficiaries to do so. So it would, it would please us very much if we don't even have to study this route. Our preference is to study all the routes. And it appears right now from my past in the Department of Transportation, knowing highways and transportation systems, that the unofficial conclusion on my part is that the Maoka route would serve better to address traffic demands and congestion. It would, it would divide the traffic up in its direction into Hilo. You know, one direction is going on the current volcano highway road or railroad avenue, and the other route would take at Maoka, possibly up to Comahana Saddle Road up in that area. And other than that, I will respond to any questions which commissioners may have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Director. So basically, at this point, you guys are on it, studying it, and going to come up with a recommendation.
Yes, currently, well, as you all read in the paper or may not have read, the funds that were available have lapsed, and they lapsed on June 30th of last year. And that is a no-no, you know, as far as every place that I work, you just don't let funds lapse. And how that happened, I do not know. I was not here. I've only been on the job two and a half months. So it's on a fast track right now. We're engaging a consulting contract to fast track it. We're going to put it in our very aggressive schedule, but in accordance to the statutory deadlines for meeting certain deadlines. So it'll go as fast as it can. And I, I personally want to get this completed. The next step would be to go to an EA or an EIS and thereafter, construction project, hopefully.
I have a question. Those funds are federal?
They're both county, federal and state. We have all three funds.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Commissioners, any more questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Director Ono.
Yeah, thank you very much. Pleasure indeed.
We will start with the presentation by planning staff. Commissioners, please take note of questions you want to ask staff. We will reserve all our questions until after hearing public testimony. Staff, please introduce yourself before beginning a presentation.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bethany Morrison of the Planning Department.
Good morning, Commissioner Janice Hotta with the Planning Department.
Good morning again, Chair Daniele, Vice Chair Perrin, and members of the When We're Planning Commission. Today, we will provide an overview of the last two chapters of the Final Recommended Draft General Plan, Chapter 5, Thriving Diverse and Regenerative Economy, and Chapter 6, Implementation and Monitoring. So here's a familiar slide where it shows the chapters of the final draft general plan.
Excuse me, could you just speak up a little louder and into the mic, please?
Okay, sure. Sorry. So on the left side of this chart here, you'll see the main chapters of the draft general plan. And then on the right side, you'll see the elements within those chapters. On this slide, I wanted to note that the thriving diversified and regenerative economy also contains an introduction section, which isn't listed on this slide. But that's where we talk about the potential for growth sectors on our island, which really are those industries that are experiencing higher than average rate of growth compared to other sectors. Before we dive into the structure of the economic chapter, I've wanted to note why we even consider economic considerations in the general plan. It's important because while we cannot predict or control economic trends through the policies and actions in the general plan, we can create a foundation for sustainable growth and economic diversification. So just a couple of points here. Our economic policies and actions help to balance land use with the preservation of our natural and cultural resources to ensure that growth benefits all residents. Secondly, our economic policies and actions help to create and promote job opportunities, support local businesses, and guide infrastructure investments, which together enhances quality of life for our county. Lastly, the economic policies and actions will also help to promote resilience through times of change. So the next few slides will touch on the, the goals of the economic chapter. So first, our first goal is an overarching goal that serves this entire chapter. And I just wanted to highlight a few words that we use in this goal. We use the word diverse to emphasize that our economy should include a variety of businesses and industries, not relying too much on just one, such as tourism, so that even when times change, we can stay strong. We also use the word regenerative, which means that we're using resources in a way that supports the land, people, and future generations. We also make sure to include innovation. And as I stated earlier, that's where you'll find that we use the word growth sectors to also highlight innovation. And this really means encouraging new and emerging ideas, technology and industries, which all together create more job opportunities. The second goal within this section is focused on agriculture and food systems. It reads agriculture is a robust diversified sector that addresses food security and includes a broad range of agricultural based businesses that highlight value. So here we emphasize value added products because this is one way that we can diversify our agricultural revenue. The last goal in this section is focused on the visitor industry. A high quality of life for residents is maintained when a regenerative visitor industry balances the preservation of natural and cultural resources with responsible visitation. So here we're highlighting that we want visitors to leave Hawaii Island better than they found it. On this slide, you'll see a list of objectives that can be found within the economic chapter. The first three are more general and speak to those growth sectors that I was talking about earlier. The next two are focused mainly on agriculture and food systems, and the last two are visitor industry focused. And so next, we just have a few examples to show how the goal, objective, policy, and action all work together. So under Objective 43, improve access at all levels for education and training. Policy 43.3 is to support apprenticeships and workforce training to strengthen leadership and entrepreneurial skill sets and networks. There's a couple of actions that help support the implementation of this policy, as you'll see on the right side of the screen. So this policy is really trying to set the vision for a stronger workforce with highlighting educational opportunities and other types of training and entrepreneurial networks. So the next example is under Objective 44, which reads increase the growth and health of small businesses. Policy 44.2 streamline regulatory processes associated with starting and operating a business. The intent here is to make regulatory processes more efficient so that it's easier to start and operate a business. A related action to support this policy is Action 44.8, promote liaison services with the private sector with respect to the county's requirements for establishing businesses on the island. So this is a way that the county can promote public-private partnerships and to help businesses in our community navigate the different requirements and provide technical assistance. Another example within the agriculture and food systems section of this chapter is found under Objective 46, which is to increase access to land for active food production. Policy 46.8, support the research and development of the agriculture technology industry in collaboration with agriculture applications to optimize production. The intent here is to promote research and development in ag tech to optimize food production. By integrating technological advancements with agricultural practices, farmers can improve efficiency, increase yields, and adapt to environmental challenges. An example of an action that helps to support this policy is Action 46. F, invest in a crop suitability tool, including existing and projected water demand. So this is just one example of a type of technology that could help those in the agricultural industry and support further investment in agriculture technology. So the last example focuses on our visitor section, visitor industry section of this chapter under Objective 49, which is to increase authentic Hawaii Island visitor experiences. Policy 49.2, strengthen the accessibility of creative industries and Hawaii Island made products such as fashion, food, and the arts to the visitor industry. There's a handful of actions in the table on the right that can all support the implementation of this policy. So the intent here is that streamline event processes, increase exposure, and infrastructure investments improve visitor accessibility and technical support strengthens business capacity.
Thank you, Janice. Bethany Morrison with the Planning Department. I'll now walk you through the implementation and monitoring chapter of the plan. Just to note that really when we talk about implementation and monitoring, it really requires a collaborative effort and leadership to really continue to push on the actions and priorities in the plan. The implementation framework is focused on local engagement, long-term and holistic approach, consistent policies and implementation, inter-agency collaboration, and finally, an implementation and monitoring system. Implementation occurs, this is a similar graphic that you've seen throughout the plan. But implementation really occurs at each planning level of the planning system. So if you remember, the general plan is this overarching umbrella. And then each of our county plans follow underneath that umbrella and help to implement and get more specific as to what strategies and priorities need to be taken. So here you see the community development plans. We have different special area plans, such as the downtown Hilo multimodal plan. We have functional plans, and those are really the other departments in the county. They all have strategic plans that they follow as well. And those all require alignment with our general plan. And then the farther down the list you go, the more specific. So we get into the regulatory measures, our county code and the way that it's implemented. And finally, permit approvals and how we, how we spend our tax dollars through our capital improvement program or operating budget. So when we look at implementation, it really is happening at all of these levels of the planning system. So to, to back up and start walking through those levels with our community development plans. These plans are important because they translate the general plan's broad strategies into specific community development priorities and actions. They help to improve and advance community resilience. And they provide a process for citizens to engage in civic dialogue through those community priorities. Through those CDPs then, or community development plans or CDPs, they help to identify recommended governmental improvements or processes that need to be improved, advocacy strategies for things that are outside of county's control. So they might suggest a state legislation action that we help to advocate for. They identify acquisition priorities through our public open space commission. They identify capital improvement projects or infrastructures that are needed in their community programs and community actions. And finally, you know, sort of what's the social capital and the community network look like for that community. Next, in that same level, we have these urban development or special area plans. And again, an example would be our downtown Hilo multimodal plan, where it gets into very specific strategies, depending on what the purpose of that plan is. And so it can look at public services, transportation, housing densities, urban design, streetscaping, landscaping design. Again, much more specific, depending on the purpose of that plan. And it includes some kind of sequencing and phasing of how that plan will unfold. And finally, an implementation program as to how it's going to be budgeted and paid for. The functional plans, as I mentioned, are really the other county departments. They all have strategic plans of some type that helps to prioritize the actions and programs that they take. And so these are just examples that are listed here, such as our water use development plan, our Department of Environmental Management is working on their wastewater master plan, and so on and so forth. These plans, again, provide sort of the strategic direction of those county departments, but it is in alignment with our general plan. And sometimes these are adopted by ordinance or resolution, depending on the need of that plan. Our capital improvement program prioritization happens through our general plan as well, where it can help to identify funding sources, health and safety needs, our long-range project delivery. So what does that look like over time for our infrastructure phasing? What kind of things need rehabilitated? Because there's been some deferred maintenance. A cost benefit analysis to make sure that it's what is being proposed is going to have an ultimate benefit. Level of service to make sure that we're providing the type of service that's needed through that particular infrastructure. And finally, alignment with land use policies. The implementation priorities and phases is unique to this plan. It does not exist in the existing 2005 general plan. And it's proposed to help guide those prioritizations that are needed to implement the plan. And this is also found on page 222, if this image is not quite good enough to, to look at. So what is it, it does is it lays out four phases of implementation. Phase one really being the consistency phase, where we're looking at making sure that our codes and regulations, once the plan is adopted, that those also get amended to be consistent with the general plan. That's been the biggest implementation gap when we did our analysis of the 2005 plan, is that there were code amendments that were called for that just haven't happened yet. So that's a big one. It also looks at things like our coordination framework within the departments and how we actualize the capital improvement program. Phase two then, so these are broken up in five-year chunks. It's approximate. It's not meant to be a hard, fast rule. Phase two then starts to look at bigger operational things. So programs, again, our capital improvement program with our infrastructure, our organizational review to align with the charter review that happens to make sure that our, our county is organized in a way that's going to help push things forward. And then updates to our community development plans. Phase three starts to look at, you know, are there adjustments that are needed to the general plan? As we've started, started to review and implement these other things, especially with our community development plans, sometimes they highlight things in the general plan that need to be addressed as an interim amendment. And then finally, phase four gets back to reviewing the, the general plan to see if we need any comprehensive updates to that plan. And finally, the monitoring and evaluation. Again, this is something that doesn't exist in the 2005 general plan and is a very important thing for us to do as we have a plan is to make sure that we're continuing to go in the right direction. So it includes things like progress reports, where we look at, you know, how well we're doing and includes a table of the actions, the agencies responsible, and the type of action that it is. And then it also includes a section on implementation indicators. These indicators are meant to show examples of how we can monitor how well we're actually doing. So it's like an indicator of your health. If your blood pressure is high, it's an indicator that you need to make some adjustments. So these indicators are the same way. They will indicate either, you know, we're doing well, we're healthy, or we're not doing as good as we wanted to be, and we need to make some adjustments. And finally, this is just the last slide on the overall plan itself and how to access it. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay, we'll now start public testimony, starting with.
Okay, we'll now start public testimony, starting with...
Excuse me. There is another presentation. And that is that, as mentioned previously, the... Bethany, do you have a copy of that that you can bring up, the recommendations? Okay, all right. So these have been passed out to each of the commissioners. It is dated February 18th, 2025. And as mentioned, this general plan has been ongoing through two administrations. With the recent administration change, the general plan had launched and was presented to the planning commissions. During that time, I took a very hard look at the plan and went through it and made some recommendations from the standpoint of this administration. And so those are provided to you. The document is 74 pages. It includes mostly minor changes to the editorial. There was some changes to the land use section that you definitely want to take a look at if you haven't already, trying to just align it more in line with our direction. And then there were a number of land use pattern allocation guide map changes in specific areas around the island. And each of those will identify the existing and the proposed change, as well as, if needed, what the current zoning is for that particular area. Some of these changes were just to align with the current zoning. It just, it didn't seem to make sense being unaligned with the current zoning. And to go and try to change the map designation to go backwards didn't seem to make sense. There were some changes that were proposed in the last administration that we felt would be good to move forward and bring it back down in density. Some of those include the Hokulea development that was proposed to be in the general plan rural designation. We had brought it back to the extensive agricultural designation in line with the agricultural one zone, one acre zoning. As well as in South Kohala or North Kohala, the Kohala Ranch project was proposed to be... The upper Maoka and the lower Makai portions were proposed to be rural. And they're consisting of mainly agricultural three acres with some smaller lots. But again, it seemed to make more sense to keep it in the extensive agricultural. So if you could please take a look at those if you haven't already. The Leeward Planning Commission did recommend approval of those recommended changes to the council. And I'd appreciate if you folks can consider a recommendation with those going up. That was the intention, was that this administration would, instead of bringing the plan back, we make recommendations and bring it up along with the planning commission's recommendations as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Director. We'll now begin public testimony, starting with in-person speakers, followed by Zoom participants. Testimony will continue until all are heard. Public comments are welcome on any agenda item now or when the item is called. Please keep your testimony respectful and deliver with aloha to me as the chair. Personal attacks and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. And the meeting may be paused or ended by the chair. At any time if necessary to maintain decorum, all public testimony is limited to three minutes. We ask each of you to please respect that limit so we can hear from as many of you as possible. If you sent us written testimony, know that we have read it, so please do not repeat it. If you find that your testimony is repetitive or of what others have said or what you have said at prior meetings, please consider simplifying testifying. Please consider simply testifying that you agree with previous statements rather than repeating them. That will allow us to recognize you and hopefully complete our agenda. Thank you. Staff, are there any individuals present to provide in-person testimony?
Thank you, Chair Danieli. We have 17 in-person testifiers for this agenda item. The first testifier is Bob Douglas, to be followed by Miley Luuvi. Please come to the testifier table so that you both may be sworn in to testify. Please turn on the microphones in front of you by pressing the green dot. Thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth now before the Windward Planning Commission?
I do.
Thank you. You will have three minutes. I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining. Please state your name and the town you reside in, and you may begin.
Hi, my name is Bob Douglas, and I reside in Panaeva in Hawaiian homelands. Thanks for the many positive proposals in the development plan. That's really welcome and refreshing. I do want to say I strongly oppose any changes that redirect Kupuna traffic through the DHL lands, specifically those lands where the Lessees live. My first comment is regarding the communication or lack of it. DHHL's never received communication by the county, was informed via the coconut wireless. I do understand that the Planning Department has no legal requirement to do so. That said, I implore you to be more empathetic to the Kanaka community going forward. Why? Because unlike fee simple real estate, a Lesia cannot simply sell the single biggest investment they will probably ever make. Many Kupuna have envisioned living out their lives there. If somebody suffers from PTSD, and there are disproportionate number of vets in the community that suffer from PTSD, should their PTSD be exacerbated by the pollution, traffic, or noise? They can't move. They don't have the option that a fee simple person, a fee simple owner has. So please keep in mind the current impositions on this community. We have high polluting businesses, we have the dump, the drag strip, the quarry, the airport noise, cruise ship pollution, water treatment plant, helicopter flyovers, homeless magnet, auto body shops and paint shops emanating all kinds of fumes. I ask you, are you aware of a more discriminated community on the island of Hawaii? I think the answer is a resounding no. So I would also ask the Planning Department to change this plan to start phasing out and banning further industrial uses within the Panaeva DHHL lands. They don't belong there. We have enough of those already. One last item I'd like for the board, or the commission, the Planning Department to consider is disallowing cruise ships to idle in port burning dirty or heavy oils. They either need to switch to a cleaner burning product or to be connected to the electrical grid to power their ships when they're in port. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. That's my neighbor. Aloha. Sorry about my voice. I have like bad allergies. My name is Miley Luuvi. I am the president for the Keokah Panaeva Farmers Association. There is no South Hilo CDP. Why? According to your planner, the reason for a CDP, and in the general plan it says it is to serve to provide a forum for community input. We had none. In the general plan, it says CDPs provide a process for citizens to engage in civic dialogue and to contribute to the identification of community priorities. Well, we didn't get a chance because there is no South Hilo CDP. As a result, our Hawaiian homestead communities have been marginalized and continue to be marginalized by this process. This is glaringly evident in the draft general plan. Despite our testimony and the planning department, your full knowledge that we oppose and that the county has no legal authorization to build roads through our communities, the planning department included proposed roads and connector roads cutting through our homestead community, running directly through some of our properties where people live. How insulting. What are you thinking? The county planning department are aware or should be aware that there is a 2002 MOU between the DHHL and the county, which provides the unique status of Hawaiian Home Commission lands, the Hawaiian Homes Commission Land Use Authority over DHHL lands. I have a quote from a letter to the prior planning director that DHHL Chair Kali Watson sent. "The county should not be articulating," quote, "the county should not be articulating proposed roads through Hawaiian homelands in its general plan without first consulting with DHHL and its beneficiaries." There are several proposed roadways depicted in this general plan. While DHHL understands that the data depicted on these maps are draft, DHHL would like to emphasize that the county, final county general plan recommendation should not depict proposed new roadways through DHHL land without first consulting with DHHL and its beneficiaries. The county has no right to create connector roads and proposed roads
You have 30 seconds left.
Please ensure that all these proposed roads are taken out of the general plan. Our community doesn't want to have to come back and deal with this through litigation. I mean, we've got other things that we'd like to do in our communities. So please consider this. I am going to give this letter to the new planning director, which he can share with you. But mahalo for your time.
Thank you.
Chair, your next two testifiers are Ken Honma and Lori Pascoe. Please come to the testifier table so that you both may be sworn in. Lori, can you hit the green dot on the microphone? Thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth now before the Windward Planning Commission?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. You'll have three minutes. I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left.
Okay, thank you.
Please state your name and the town you reside in, and then you can begin.
My name is Ken Honma, and I live in Curtis Town. And so just to be clear for everybody, I'm swearing to our Creator, that's who I swore to, and also to my peers, the people of the county of Hawaii, that I am speaking to protect our inalienable rights. That's why I'm here today. Good morning, commissioners and staff. Vote no, confident, as your recommendation on General Plan 2045. The plan needs to include the most important element, which is a discussion of what the ideal quality of life is for the inhabitants of the county of Hawaii. You must include the elements that make up and determine the happiness, quality of life that is envisioned in this plan, presently not written down or voiced. You must also include wording that establishes the primacy of liberty and the primacy of the freedoms inherited from our Creator that are guaranteed without abridgement to all inhabitants. This process we are experiencing now firsthand is an opportunity for you to demonstrate your commitment to us with respect to our form of government, which is a republic. It is we, the people, who decide what is best for us. The step-by-step disregard for the will of the people has brought us to a point that so-called codes will override our God-given rights, like freedom to travel, freedom to own property, freedom to live where we choose. This plan is presently ignorant and silent on these fundamental concepts. It is an unlawful and treasonous document that needs to be not recommended in its entirety by this commission.
Thank you.
Lori, you may begin.
Oh, you wanted to stay.
Good morning, planning commissioners. The vast majority of the testimony from inhabitants of Hawaii County have used their voice and writing skills to direct you to vote and to not recommend the Hawaii County General Plan 2025. We've been listening to these testimonies for a long time, both this side and the Kona side. The living and breathing inhabitants of the county of Hawaii have given you their mandate for non-support of the plan, in part or in whole. You must pass this no recommendation on to the county council because this is the will of the people of Hawaii County. To respect these people who have come forward and responded to the plan, you must put in writing with your recommendation a summary of all the concerns which the inhabitants have clearly, honestly, and sincerely brought forth to you. The lawful hierarchy of the land is the God on top, the people, and then the government, which is you in your positions, with God, the Creator, at the top, and we, the people, above the government. You, as a neighbor, a peer, and an equal, are now in the subservient role as commission members. You have heard and understood that you will give voice and substance to the inhabitants' concerns, and that you will work with inspired action. That is your duty. We expect you to pass on to the county council our many concerns associated with this plan and our no vote and your non-approval of this plan. You have no other lawful alternative but to reject this plan in its entirety in order to secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves and our and your prosperity. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Please refrain from public applauding. Thank you.
Chair, your next testifiers are Nako Ulani Warrington and Susan Champini. Good morning.
Good morning.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth now before the Windward Planning Commission?
I do.
Thank you. You'll have three minutes. I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining.
Mahalo.
Please state your name and the town you reside in, and you may begin.
Mahalo. Aloha. My name is Nako Ulani Warrington of Panaeva, testifying on behalf of Kupuna for the Maupuna, Ahui of Kupuna, Hawaiian homestead farmers from Panaeva. I'm also testifying as a member of the Keokah Panaeva Farmers Association. Our Panaeva community is in strong opposition to the Hawaii County Our Panaeva community is in strong opposition to the Hawaii County General Plan 2045 Final Recommended Draft that continues to dismiss what we beneficiaries have been saying for years regarding the general plan. Again, the general plan must include the Hilo Community Development Plan discrimination. There is no South Hilo CDP in the Hawaii County General Plan 2045. South Hilo is the only community development plan left out of the general plan. South Hilo Hawaiian homesteaders of Keokah and Panaeva are being discriminated against. We have been demanding an updated South Hilo CDP for years and insist again that the GP include the Hilo CDP 1975, albeit 50 years old, like the Hokulea, to ensure this outdated CDP is part of the general plan's Phase One, as Bethany so clearly explained in her presentation, part of Phase One, where CDPs will be updated on page 222. Mahalo, Bethany. Number two, the general plan must include Department of Hawaiian Homeland Commission Chair Kali Watson's comments and documents submitted to the planning department back in February during the public comment period. Nothing from Chair Kali Watson was included, nothing. For example, one of the documents Chair Watson asked to be included in the general plan is a 2002 MOU MOA between the county and DHHL. In November of 2024 in Kona at the Leeward Planning Commission hearing, when questioned by the commissioners about this document, the former planning director Kern testified that in fact the MOU was included in the general plan.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
It's not there. And the recommendations of current planning director Darrell is a laundry list of substantive and non-substantive recommendations to the GP, but no MOU. Another comment by Chair Watson is that no roads be included in the general plan without beneficiary consultation. However, not only were the connector roads not removed, more roads through our homestead lands have been added to the general plan. To be sure, the road needs of our Puna Ohana and all Oha must be addressed.
Thank you for your testimony.
But we have said, A'ole, thank you so much. Mahalo, Nui. Please reject.
Yes, your three minutes were finished. Thank you.
I apologize.
Susan, you can go ahead and start.
Aloha, commission members. I completely agree with these speakers. I am Sue Champany, resident of Lale Evi and Keokah, president of, vice president of the Lale Evi Community Association. We are not beneficiaries, but we are between two beneficiary communities. What impacts them impacts us as well. I'll speak to only one item, roads. The topic of new roads was not included in the transportation section. This information is hidden in the back of the general plan as a series of fuzzy maps based on the online ArcGIS system. The maps show proposed roads associated with the Puna Makai route and other new roads for Hilo. Most troubling is a series of roads to nowhere that go through Panaeva homesteads eastward to uninhabited coastline, then cut through King's Landing Maha homesteads to join up at the end of Kalani Ana Ale Ole Avenue in Lale Evi, Keokah. It's not just a single escape route, but many roads, including one that may only benefit a real estate investment firm in Honolulu, the owner of 2,000 acres of undeveloped coastline. Is this the real agenda of these proposed roads that cut through three different Hawaiian homesteads communities to create another expensive oceanfront development? Who does this really benefit? And why were the communities affected not consulted as to their needs? It's unlikely that the three homesteads and beachfront Keokah-Lale Evi will benefit. More likely will be negative impact that we already experience of traffic, congestion, overcrowded beach parks, burning rubber, and all the things that already fragment and degrade our communities. None of these roads serve the main thrust of the transportation goals as outlined, which are to encourage alternative transportation and reduce driving miles. To address those issues between Puna and Hilo, there are two low-hanging fruits you could go after. One, make school buses free and more frequent to include after-school activities. This will reduce highway traffic at Keow and other schools due to drop-offs and pickups. Two, use railroad for its original purpose and institute a commuter train from Nanavale all the way to Hilo with park-and-ride areas at each stop. These two actions alone would do a lot to reduce road miles and support alternative transportation without huge road projects to nowhere.
You have 30 seconds left.
Thank you for your testimony.
You still have 30 seconds left.
Yeah. I'm sorry. No, I wanted to say mahalo, Nui Loa, for all your hard work. I know this is not easy, and I was done.
Thank you for your testimony. Chair, your next testifiers are Rocky Ishibashi and Paul Andrade. Please come to the testifier table so I can swear you in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth before the Winward Planning Commission?
I do.
Thank you. You'll have three minutes. I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left. Please state your name and the town you reside in, and you may begin.
My name is Paul Andrade. I am opposed to the 2045 Agenda Plan. We need a plan that comes from the people that live in these districts and is a district-by-district plan. We, the people, know the needs in our areas. I find this plan to be overwhelming, burdensome, as well as destructive to the Big Island and corrupt in nature, as well as being globally driven the way it is written. You can read anything into it. Over the last 40 years, the county and state have shown me that it has not been able to manage the land it controls as it is. For example, taking down the trees in the medium on the Panaeva stretch. And now I think about it, why the global warming people were not there stopping global warming? We have been told trees eat carbon monoxide, but the 2045 bill does not talk about planting trees. The only thing was accomplished was a creation of a flood problem at the intersection by the minimum security jail. And for your information, I have spoke to the head of the Public Works two years ago, and I'm guessing a lawsuit must be the only way to fix this problem. The 2045 bill does not discuss the cancellation of unworthy tax money spending like building a unnecessary acceleration lane like the one at the University Ags School on Panaeva Stretch. In the 2045 bill, I don't see any discussion of a future acceleration lane to be built at the Mamaki Street Staying Back Intersection. And I am sure that $70 million would buy and save more voters' lives than a unit payoff. I believe that the 2045 bill does not have the voters' best interest of how our tax dollars are spent. I read in the 2045 bill, a secondary road to Lower Puna will finally be built, which I approve of. It's only 30 years behind schedule. I also read where we are building a new highway from North Kulani to Saddle Road. I think that's a great use of my tax dollars. Thank you. In the 2045 bill, I also read where we are finally building a solid waste dump very close to the Kalani Prison, where the long-range plan is to incorporate inmates, which is a work program in separating of trash, as well as to pay a very minimum wage to help with their return to society. I also read where we are finally moving the wastewater department base yard so that we have railroad joined into the airport road. Great idea, planning department. Also, in the 2045 bill, I read where we are finally connecting Kananeani Ole Avenue to Middle Street, that, by the way, is Henry Road School. And I must thank the planning department for the new small boat marina in Hilo to be built very soon. And I feel that if we are taking private land or going to Hawaiian homes land, these lands, these people should be compensated for losses or whatever they feel that they need to make things happen. But we need to have roads built.
Your three minutes are finished. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Aloha, Rocky Ishibashi. I'm against all the plans that I heard earlier. What's your secretaries were talking about, farming? Why don't you put the geothermal plant right by the farms in any zone? Like Jeffrey said, 2024, when we saw him at the planning commission, department, planning department, said that the state already voted to put geothermal in any zone. Is that true? On agriculture land, to right a mile from my house, there's no evacuation routes, none. You guys made none. There is none. I worked for the Department of Education 30 years. 10 years, I had 1,000 students a year that I was in charge of being saved. You guys don't have an evacuation route for 30,000 people in Puna. We've been poisoned twice since the state approved geothermal. Took my girlfriend up to the hospital. There's no way out. There's no evacuation routes. You guys have none, zero. Should be in that plan. Putting it on agriculture land, I poisoned the food. I grow food on my place. I don't think it's safe. I believe it's not because we've been poisoned twice. Last time, with heavy metals, taste in our mouth. That's when I took my girlfriend up to Hilo Hospital. You guys gotta get your shit together because you're poisoning us. You're gonna be poisoning Mauna Kea, getting a geothermal up there on Hawaiian homelands. I'm a beneficiary, and I say no. I'm voting no right now, as long with all the other Kanakas in here. We vote no. Since 1968, the university have been using Puna homelands to get at Mauna Kea. We didn't get no money for that. They're not paying anything. And I waited on the list since 1994. I can't get up in the land, but the richest corporation in the world, BlackRock, can afford to explore drill in Hawaiian homelands. They can afford it. They're the richest corporation in the world. Why does taxpayers have to do it? Because it's on Hawaiian homelands. That's why I'm here. You guys cannot have permission to use that at your will. It does not belong to you. It is the federal program from when we were kicked off of our island, and then we gotta pay rent to you guys.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
You guys gotta take care of the students. Way back there when we heard there's gonna be issues at the school, that I will protect those keke with my life. Nothing's changed. If you guys are the ones in my way, I'll go through you guys. I want to hold you guys all accountable if anyone of my keke die. Because I worked 10 years at Keow High and all my students out there. I worked 14 years at Hilo Union School protecting our keke. If that's what your job's to be, not mine, but I will do it because you guys aren't. You guys gotta wake up and do your job.
Your three minutes are finished. Thank you for your testimony.
Anybody get any questions for me?
Thank you. First off, no profanity, please. This is not the forum, okay? Also, when you are addressing us, no first names in all comments to me. Thank you.
Chair, your next testifiers are Kalei Kailikini and Io Kepa Kaeo Kaululo. Please come to the testifier's table so I may swear you in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth before the Winward Planning Commission?
I do. I do.
Thank you. You'll have three minutes. I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining. Please state your name and the town you reside in, and you may begin.
Aloha, my name is Kalei Kailikini. Aloha, Kakahiaka, good morning. I'm from Hilo, Waikia'uka. I represent myself and my family, Kailikini Purdy. My maiden name is Purdy, so I gotta let that know. But you know, I reject and I oppose the general plan 2045. This is not my first rodeo here, and so I have said a lot of reasons why. I'm just gonna briefly go over it, but I believe it's really important for me to restate what one of the testifiers went over, and that is that this plan, it violates our inalienable rights to life, to liberty, and to freedoms given to us by God, not by man. It's given to us by God. And governments, our governments, they were entrusted to protect, to preserve, to promote these rights. That's in your oath of office, okay? And that's the mayor. Everyone that's elected, they take an oath of office. So it's identified in that oath, and we hope that they don't violate or breach it. So the main things I'm gonna go over is stakeholder. I object stakeholder because it's anyone. You're allowing even Communist China to come into Hilo or Hawaii Island and make decisions wrong. Then there's climate change that's numerous throughout the plan. Climate change is natural, normal, and it is not dangerous. It's been proven by very reliable credentialed scientists. What is dangerous that is not mentioned in the plan are weather machines, weather modification, weather geoengineering, and they made a law. It's called the Weather Modification Act. And then they created, HARP created the technology. It's been in effect. They've been altering the weather since 1960, and the statistics are out there. So even though the volcano is going off, it could be, the weather modification could be initiating that. These hurricanes, the line of fires, absolutely positively evidence that it is weather modification and direct energy, microwave burning. And yet, there has not been a private thorough investigation of the line of fires. Yes, I have a bone to pick about that. My nephew was in the fire. He luckily survived, but even though he survived, that doesn't stop you to think about it could have been.
You have 30 seconds left.
Okay, so I'm gonna end with water. They want a tax rainwater that belongs to God. That's in the plan. Why? The water that falls out of the sky into a water catchment belongs to God and belongs to you because you got the water catchment. So to end everything, please, everything is wrong in the plan. I reject it. I oppose it, and I support everybody that's in opposition, and please think about us first and foremost.
Io Kepa, you can go ahead and start. Please let us know the town you reside in.
Aloha, Kako. Io Kepa Koinoa, Waikiau, Maial. I just wanted to comment and just remind the county of the planning, the planning strategies that you guys are developing, which you guys didn't seek South Hilo beneficiary consultation to the roads. And I know this is a very sensitive topic for the county. I can tell by the demeanor and the tone, and I just wanna encourage you guys to go through the process, due process, our inalienable rights, our discrimination policies that we've been facing for our beneficiaries, to go through this, to go through this progress of running roads through Hawaiian homesteads, not getting... not getting our support from our beneficiaries, especially our waitlists. I'm a waitlister. I've been waiting for a long time. I'll be continuing to waiting for God knows when. But we wanna advocate for clear policies that you guys go through due process and not discriminate continuously amongst our beneficiaries. Like how Antigas was explaining, we go through our commissioners, we go through our chair. And if they don't hear nothing about this and we finding out this CDP coming through the county, it only creates more PTSD, more frustration, and then we hear that due process has been violated. So we just wanna encourage you guys, you know, sometimes these kind of conversations bring out a lot of emotions out of us. And we just wanna reassure you guys that whatever concerns that you guys are hearing through our roads and our developments that are not going through due process is just our concerns. And I think this is a great place to share it. And I cannot support the 2025 CDP for various, for various numerous reasons. And we just wanna encourage that we go through that due processor. And thank you guys for hearing our testimonies and our concerns. And we Kako, the waitlisters of Moko Keave, Kako, all of these testimonies that come forward with their concerns, that's something that we take very dearly and we wanna support everybody who comes forward and make these wonderful mahalo being presented. Mahalo.
Thank you for your testimonies.
Chair, your next two testifiers are David McLean, I'm sorry, David DeKleen and Michael Johnson. Please come to the testifier table so that I can swear you in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth now before the Winward Planning Commission?
I do.
Thank you. You'll have three minutes. I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining. Please state your name, the town you reside in, and you may begin.
I'm Dave DeKleen, Hilo, Waikia'uka. I say do not pass this general plan as presently constituted. It's not the will of the people of the big island for three undeniable reasons. You've heard some very eloquently mentioned. And the first is there's no Hilo CDP as part of this process. And I think that's really illustrated by the ladies from Keokah, the farmers association there, who I don't know. I've been speaking about this for a year about there's no Hilo CDP, but I think they really illustrate the reason why we need a Hilo CDP so that all those voices are heard from South Hilo. I'm up in Waikia'uken. People up there also haven't been involved in this process, don't know about the general plan, they're ranchers, et cetera, up there. So that's the reason that we need a Hilo CDP. Number two, also mentioned, there's no consensus on the Green Carbon 17 Sustainable Development Goals Agenda, all coming from world bodies going back 30 years, but not from Hawaii Island. It's just inserted into this general plan virtually out of nowhere. I mean, we know where it comes from, but it doesn't come from here. The third is that the zoning criteria is vague and is feared by so many who have been looking into it during this whole process. And zoning is what hits closest to home, so we have to get zoning correct. So what can be accomplished? The mandate for this whole process is to update the 2005 general plan. So maybe this seems ridiculous, but to me, I think it makes sense. Rather than pass this new one, which is fatally flawed, let's go back to the 2005 plan, which I've been doing. Let's use that as the template and let's work with that. Let's fit everything that's been done into that template using its 15 categories and fit them into there. Let's assemble a Hilo group to then pick up what hasn't been done with Hilo and have them also fit into these 15 categories. By doing this, we will be working within a framework that is tried and true, one we have been living with it.
You have 30 seconds left.
Everyone has familiarity with it. All additions will be concrete, just as they were then. There will be no theorizing, speculating, philosophizing on so-called scientific trends. There must be consensus, and using a 20-year-old document is far more likely to result in consensus than a new one so riddled with problems that so many have been bringing attention to these hearings. I suggest January 1st of 2026, all of that be concluded and we look again at this plan.
Your three minutes are finished. Thank you.
My name is Michael Johnson and I represent the Onal Gardens Farms in Hakalau. I wanna thank the commission for all the work that you voluntarily done to hear this out. This is my third go-around with the general plan, starting in the 1990s. And, but this one, this one is almost like a takeover of where we been and where we wanna go. It's like the man said here, this is coming from outside of us, it's not really coming from us. But I wanna emphasize the lack of the CDP for here in Hilo because the lack here is the lack all over. And for example, the Keokah homes land is being reclassified from agricultural to natural land. And I object to the process of turning ag land into natural land because then you can't farm anymore. And in the plan, if you're not using your ag land, it can be rezoned natural land, which is, in my eyes, it's worse than conservation land. And you just can't go around taking people's land and say, well, you're not using it, so we'll rezone it. And every time I come in and testify here, there's always people that are getting these letters in the mail that say their land has been rezoned. And nobody knows who's doing it. Who's sending out these rezoning letters? How does that process work? And so the plan is a threat to rezone the land use of people's private land. Then this plan comes with a lot of regulations that will fit into the model of the climate change thing so that we have to build according to new codes. We have to use our land in certain ways to fight wildfires and things like that. So there's a lot of things coming our way that doesn't look good for the future, especially when you go down to the Hilo downtown urban. Hilo downtown is being rezoned as high-density urban without a CDP.
You have 30 seconds left.
For that area. And that's not good. The Non-Hiloa Golf Course is being rezoned for urban use. I golf there. Every Father's Day, I go golfing there. And so the area in Hilo is being zoned for higher-density urban while the rural areas are lower-density residential. And to me, we need to have more people out in the rural areas to settle there and use the land to grow food.
Your three minutes are finished. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimonies.
Chair, your next testifiers are Michelle Melendez, to be followed by Millicent Cummings. Is Millicent here?
Yes, she's here, I saw her.
Okay, I'll move on and then call her back.
She's right here. Yeah, I can go first.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth now before the Winward Planning Commission?
I do.
Thank you. You'll have three minutes. I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining. Please state your name, the town you reside in, and you may begin.
Michelle Melendez, South Kona. I first, I wanted to say, the planning director met with a pastor last week and he said that the minority people, that we are the minority and that we're just a small, just not very many people are opposed to this plan. That is an absolute outrageous lie because how, where are the people that are in support of this plan? Like, I've been coming to these meetings since prior to you guys, about eight months I've been in every single meeting and I've never seen one person in full support of this plan. I told a farmer the other day about the electric vehicles.
Please speak into the mic, please.
I told the, I was talking to a farmer about the electric vehicles and she said, how am I supposed, I said, they want every person on the island to have electric vehicles. And she goes, how am I supposed to farm? She goes, I need diesel, I need a four-by-four. The only people who should have these electric vehicles mandated to them is the government. And you guys, if you guys need to put that into the plan, you need to change that because people have a right to have diesel, to have gas. If they're provided for us, we have a right to purchase them. Not only that, but I've already told you numerous times that electric vehicles are hazardous. We cannot put these in our landfill and they are a fire danger, absolute fire danger, flame throwers, to actually be correct. The Hawaii homeland is not in the plan because it's a private agency, but here's the thing. You guys have so much land that's turning, all the state land you said is turning to conservation or natural, which what local would say, yeah, let's just have natural preserved for nature? Like, that's, what my point is, is that the Hawaii homeland, how are they gonna give the land back to the people if the land use is conservation or nature and which means nobody can farm, build, or be on it? So that should be absolutely booted out. Your guys' map of telling people that their land use is gonna change from residential to recreation, which lowers their property value, is criminal. You're doing that without due process. That is a criminal act toward that family for their retirement, for their willing their property to keke. That is absolute criminal. That should all be removed. You cannot change somebody's land use from residential to recreation just because somebody, whomever, which I don't think it's anybody here, I think it's actually people off on the mainland that have done this plan. You can't just say, oh, your land property is now changed without due process, without them being able to say anything about that. That is against so many things, not just against the constitution with people having the right to own their own property.
You have 30 seconds left.
But we, you guys are absolutely must motion for a negative recommendation of this plan. Otherwise, you do not support the people and you do not support this island, this ina at all. Your seat, your seat is our seat, is the seat of the people. And I appreciate your time and your volunteering. You need to represent us, which we are telling you, to motion for a negative recommendation on this plan.
Millicent, you can go ahead and start.
Mahalo. Millicent, Hilo. The GP 45, which was recommended by this body, was never and will never be accepted by 99% of the testifiers. Any plan with so many dangerous loopholes and vagaries for unknown stakeholders, NPs, NGOs, unelected officials, along with undisclosed corporate interests, that would be granted unlawful access to our public trust, resources, and privately owned property shall not be tolerated. We clearly denounce any UN Agenda 21-related strategy to control land, reduce human influence, and consolidate power over resources thereby restricting land use, weakening property rights, and forcing landowners into compliance with centralized, top-down environmental regulations. Any plan that could in fact limit local food production, making us even more dependent on global supply chains, regulate off-grid living, control water and water access, leaving us vulnerable to further land grabs under conservation easement, eminent domain, or climate-driven sustainability initiatives shall not be tolerated. Those who drafted this ill-begotten plan and those who facilitate it like yourselves have committed several violations of the Sunshine Law throughout this process, rendering it null and void. This plan is inconsistent with the Hawaiian Homes Act of 1920 and Ordinance 05-156, clearly defining Hawaii County's obligation to establish a CDP for all major districts, and yet Hilo is still bereft since 2005. We challenge the lack of a Hilo community plan, the outrageous denial of native Hawaiian interests regarding protected rights, and Hawaiian homesteads being excluded from this general plan, and wholeheartedly denounce your recommendation. Laws and regulations that protect our property and constitutionally protected rights shall not be compromised. No powers have been or will be granted to any representative of we the people or to any agency, commission, or unelected bodies to so blatantly betray the clamor and informed voice of 99% of the testifiers, who have painstakingly explained to you exactly why this plan is a reckless, unsustainable, and traitorous document. We have come to fully realize during these kangaroo public testimony hearings at 9:00 AM, while most of us are at work, confusing meeting times and locations on a mismanaged, incomplete website failing to provide proper public notices with nonsensical arbitrary rules to follow in order for our voices to be heard, as if we were beholden to you, when it is quite the opposite. We understand exactly where we stand and you are standing in full breach of the public trust. This is however, there is however, still time to withdraw your favorable recommendation and make the right choice on behalf of 99% of us, who would be negatively impacted by your present recommendation. You could in fact make a motion today to clear your names by withdrawing your ill-advised recommendation thereby predicting our country from further insult or harm. And that is what we expect you to do today. Mahalo.
Thank you for your testimonies.
Chair, the next two testifiers are John Stern and Jesse Waldgen. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth before the Winward Planning Commission?
Yes.
Thank you. You'll have three minutes. I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left. Please state your name, the town you reside in, and you may begin.
Good morning. My name is John Stern. I have a piece of agricultural land in Hakalau. There I have farm animals and crops such as taro, kava, coconuts, bananas, other fruit trees, and much more, and more plans. My main concern here is to see that this land is maintained in perpetuity for this purpose. My comments today were something more of a specific nature. I'm learning that you guys have already recommended the plan to the council, if that's correct, I'm not sure. But if you have, I'm seeing shaking heads, so I'm not sure, but I would suggest you not do that. And it's not a bad idea, as a previous commenter said, to go back to the 2005 general plan. My specific comments had to do with page 80 of the plan, which is Chapter 4, Objective 10, Action Points A and B. And 10-point B reads, an action point for amending the zoning code and subdivision code to allow cluster plan development to be applied to all zoning districts with appropriate building site standards. I think this is something that should be left out because it leaves the door open for much abuse in the future. What is a natural state? Why should a cluster plan development be applied to farmland? Please eliminate these two action steps as they are unnecessary and potentially harmful. In support of the previous testifiers, I really do feel strongly about having a statement of commitment to the Hawaiian Constitution and the Constitution of the United States of America, specifically the Bill of Rights of each of those constitutions. If you were to go ahead with this plan, I hope not. The other ideas I've heard here that I think are vitally important are the need for a community development plan for South Hilo. And I love the idea of planting trees to alleviate so-called climate change. Evacuation routes, yes. Eliminating these vague terminologies like stakeholder, yes, please do that. And that's all I have to say. I really appreciate your time and commitment to this. I really appreciate your time and commitment to this. Thank you.
Aloha and good morning, board and chair. Thank you. I feel it is my responsibility to speak up for all the residents on the island that are completely unaware of General Plan 2045. I myself only found out about this plan four months ago through word of mouth, and have since tried asking anyone who would listen if they've heard of this, and no one knows. Why aren't the residents of Hawaii Island being notified of GP 2045? This doesn't only affect a small portion of the island, it affects the entire island. So why hasn't the residents been mailed a notice of this plan and what it all entails? This plan is acting as a thief in the night coming to steal our land and take away more of our freedoms. Why haven't the residents here been given a chance to understand what the ramifications of this plan are and how it would change the course of families living here for generations to come? If the people living here were properly notified about this, I promise you, there would be more than 17 people here to testify against this plan. Don't let the lack of numbers in these meetings be an indication that the people of Hawaii don't care about the general plan. The people just don't know and are not being made aware. I speak for the concerned citizens here. We do not consent to General Plan 2045. Vote no to this, board members. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimonies.
Chair, your next testifiers are...
We have a clarification.
And just to provide for those in the audience and those listening, the Windward Planning Commission has not yet forwarded a recommendation to council. They hope to do so this week. Thank you.
Chair, your next two testifiers are Ka'uilani Almeda and Patrick Kahavaiola. I apologize if I didn't pronounce your name correctly. Good morning. Please raise your right hand. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth before the Windward Planning Commission? Thank you.
I do. I don't swear, but I will.
Yes. You'll have three minutes. I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left. Please state your name, the town you reside in, and you may begin.
Hello, my name is Pat Kahavaiola. I'm a product of the homestead here in Kilkaua and Panaeva. I was born in Kilkaua, raised, and now live in Panaeva. My family are on ag land. I am here with this general plan just to, as was reiterated with everybody that came before. This is about my third opportunity over the years to be... In three sentences, the county charter, of which you are all in, does say, in three sentences, Article 1, incorporation and the geographical limits, speaks of who the county is. And it says, "The people of the County of Hawaii shall and continue to be the body political incorporated by name of County of Hawaii, herein after the charter called 'county', by that name shall have perpetual succession." Geographical limits. The island of Hawaii and all islands within the shores thereof and the waters adjacent thereto shall be the County of Hawaii. I have a problem with just that portion. Where is Hawaiian homes in that? Because they said, the charter says, "The county owns all the land." Makes no specifics about Hawaiian home. I don't worry about it. I don't worry about it because I'm a product of the homestead. I am governed by the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. And everybody here who's a beneficiary, 50% by blood, they're governed by that. And the land we sit on is governed by that. This county has no zoning jurisdiction. They have no land use rights over our properties. They cannot tell us what to do. It's the commission that does it. Our administration has acquiesced to the county. The state has acquiesced. The Hawaiian Home Commission acquiesced that right over to you. But it's just by acquiescence. If you was to get the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act, you're clearly forbidden from using eminent domaining land. You cannot use the land. If the general plan says that you want to tie Railroad Avenue into Kuna to get an escape road, you can't do that. Because Hawaiian homelands cannot be used for general purposes, for the general public. Waimea bypass road clearly made that articulation, if you wanted to know about that. So this is why it's important
You have 30 seconds left.
...for myself to raise that concern. As a native Hawaiian, I am governed by the Hawaiian Home Commission Act. And until that gets cleared, all of you and this county will continue to be burdened by the mistakes. Thank you.
Aloha. Ova'ono o Ka'uilani Almeda. No haua'omaka, aina opulu'ulu'opanaeva. Ma'uaikia. Waheluhelu'iia'u ina'mea'apau. I read everything, and I'm here to present the following. I am in agreement with Uncle Pat. A lot of the palapala of the Apuni, the government, whether it's state and/or county, doesn't have any of the Hawaiian homes name with DHL listed as part of the partnership that you should in fact include on all your palapala as well, so that everybody from the get-go understands that we have this type of understanding that our lands are commissioned, authorized, and not just anybody can use it. And through the olelo, through the community, there's been this thing that we have to show up to these meetings constantly reaffirming that. And so part of my manao is this. In 1963, 1963, the legislature of the State of Hawaii enacted Act 73, enabling the counties of the State of Hawaii to establish charter commission to study their existing governments and to recommend and draft charters upon their determination that a charter for form of government was fit and desirable. According to the County of Hawaii, created a charter commission whose study and work began in 1964. In the initial charter, which became effective on January 2, 1969, served as the constitution of the government of the County of Hawaii and provided the basic framework for its organization and operation. And it's also provided for the orderly transition to the new form of government and for amendments or revisions by ordinance of petition and by mandatory review every 10 years. This is part of where we're talking about today. There is no mention of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act, of which I really would like for you folks to study because it does affect our relationship between the county and the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. The Maui County Charter was amended last year, I think, to include a position, a commission, Hawaiian Homes commission seat on their water commission. And through that, they have found that relationship with the Maui County and the water because water is also the kule'ana of the State of Hawaii through the DHL, DHL, to understand that we have certain requirements that DHL has with water in the State of Hawaii that nobody else has. So instead of starting from behind the cart, let's put the cart before and look at these palapala and adjust it so that we don't have to keep on coming here reminding you of that...
Three minutes are finished. Thank you.
But is that that partnership? I want to call it a partnership. And that by having these seats and stuff on the commission would probably more than likely help the county as well as us and everybody in the homestead understand that, you know, there's got to be things inside there that would build that partnership. Yeah? Thank you.
Chair, your last testifier in person is Kevin Hill.
I think we're going to take a brief 10-minute break. Okay, so we'll come back at 10:55. Thank you.
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
Please. Staff, do we have Zoom up?
Yes, good to go.
Yes, Chair, just give me one minute.
Okay, Chair, we're active.
Okay, we're back. So the next testifier, please go ahead. Please turn on your microphone.
Check one, two, good.
Bring that a little closer to you, please. Mike.
Check one, two, good.
Chair, we have one more testifier after Kevin Hill. She's signing up now. Kevin, I'll go ahead and swear you in. Thank you. Do you swear or tell the truth? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth now before the Windward Planning Commission?
The best of my ability, yes.
Thank you. You'll have three minutes. I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds left. Please state your name, the town you reside in, and you may begin.
Good morning, my name is Kevin Hill, and I'm from Haukala. And appreciate your guys' all-time. And I know it's been an exhausting round. And I did have an opportunity to meet with a couple of you, this staff, this last week, and I really appreciated that time. And I learned some things that I thought were, that were really helpful to me, just in understanding this whole process. And a couple of things that I learned were that many people feel restricted. So I feel restricted. I feel like you maybe hear frustration and the emotion in the voices. I remember in one of the Leeward meetings, one of the commissioners says, "I feel berated." You can understand the intensity, the emotion, and I get it too. Because in a large degree, I'm kind of looking at this as like, this is our social compact, right? What we do with this document, kind of, is what we're in agreement for, for what the next twenty years are gonna look like for our lives together. And it should be. It should, there should be emotion in it, because it's really meaningful. But one of the things that I, I think that I learned is, is that there's many restrictions at your guys' level and beyond, that, that don't, that maybe we don't think about properly in this context. And so my question, before I mention the two examples, is that if we were just to say, what does our conscience say? What are the self-evident truths about different portions of the plan, different people's testimony, what people are emoting, what the overall consensus is? Some of it, you know, factual, some of it may be off in some factual elements. But what would we do if we didn't have any other barriers? So one of those, the two things that have examples, one of them is, there's a hundred and fifty days deadline that our director has to have before this thing is handed to the county council, or if somebody says, I mean, there's consequences in terms of him doing his job. Once, so I understand that, right? Once that button, button got pushed, and the previous director submitted it, there's a hundred and fifty day deadline, and you guys are all under a deadline. So I get that. Everybody's asking, can we just push pause? And according to some statute code ordinance, statute code ordinance, that pause button isn't available to you, but it is available to the county council. That's helpful for me to understand, right? Maybe would take off some of the frustration. So that's one thing. The second thing is, is that I learned in talking with, well, Bethany was in the meeting, and I got to hear her perspective, and that the twenty fifteen, there are things that the state adopted in twenty fifteen that are imposed on the county. What happened in twenty fifteen, all this stuff about United Nations that you guys keep hearing about, all seventeen principles of that were adopted, they called them strategic development goals, were all adopted by the state in twenty fifteen and saying, okay, now you guys have all got to listen to what we just adopted at the state. And there's been an awful lot of testimony, I say preponderance of the testimony, has been an objection to that one rule, that one ruling. So I don't know what statute code or ordinance makes us feel like we have to wear the handcuffs and the hobbles.
Thirty seconds left.
Dang. The handcuffs and the hobbles that the state imposes on it. But if we didn't have those hobbles, what would we do? What kind of a social compact would we create that we wanted to live by? So I guess I'll just have to be suffice. And I just wanted to end with this one quote. "The Council for Economic and Social Affairs, ECOSOC, at the UN mission at the UN, Edward Hartley at the General Assembly," so I got this on Friday, this is from the federal government, and quote, "simply globalist endeavors like Agenda Twenty Thirty and the SDGs lost at the ballot box. Therefore, the United States rejects and denounces the Twenty Thirty Agenda for Sustainable Development and the Sustainable Development Goals, and will no longer reaffirm them as a matter of course." So I just want to stay, say that if I had one thing to say about my, my objections, that's it. And, and that we're maybe in good company at the federal level.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony.
Chair, your final testifier is Adriana Dour. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth before the Windward Planning Commission? Thank you. You'll have three minutes. I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining. Please state your name, the town you reside in, and you may begin.
My name is Adriana Dour. My name is Adriana Dour, and I live in the town of Hilo.
Could you please move that a little closer to you? You can, you can move the whole thing closer.
Oh.
There you go.
My name is Adriana Dour, and I live in the town of Hilo. And I'm going to read my testimony. First of all, aloha to all of you. Thank you for your time to listen to We the People of the Big Island. I strongly oppose the final recommended draft of the County of Hawaii's General Plan Twenty Forty-Five, and humbly request you vote to reject it in its entirety. I am seventy-one years old. My husband and I have lived and raised a family in our Honoli Poli house for over forty years. In October of twenty twenty-three, at the dog and pony show being put on by the county to promote the new general plan, I noticed that the future land use of our property was changed from low-desert city urban to natural recreation. Our own family home, we were planning to leave, our Ohana, has been re-designated without compensation or consent, negating our rights of private property ownership. This drastically lowers our future property value and opens the door to unsolicited rezoning. Throughout the plan, pages sixty-six, seventy-eight, eighty-six, eighty-eight, two-hundred-and-twenty-five to be specific, there are references to smart growth strategies and smart growth development and smart growth principles, which suggests direct reference to the smart cities, AKA UN Agenda Twenty-One, now UN Agenda Thirty. If you aren't educated on smart or fifteen-minute cities, I invite you to do your own research into its restrictive and surveilled implementations, and ask yourself if this global agenda is pona for the big island of Hawaii. On page eighty-eight, there is the requirement that all Hawaii departments collaborate with the Office of Sustainability, Climate Equity, and Resilience, OSC, as the lead agency to ensure the integration of the county's goals of sustainability, climate resilience, and equity in all county operations and planning initiatives. This is an appointed, not elected, agency, and it's now responsible for the implementation of the regulations of the smart growth principles we will be subjected to. I am disturbed by this new overseeing entity, I am disturbed this new overseeing entity will null and void all public input and leave crucial decisions for our island to unelected officials. Finally, on the plan on page forty-nine.
Thirty seconds left.
Claims to be based on community-driven values, goals, and objectives. Yet the District of Hilo, which we've heard before, where I reside, as well as over twenty-two percent of the big island, has no community development plan. Hilo has never been represented in the process. Why is this? We too are entitled to our voice and input in the future. Again, mahalo for your time and attention. Please vote to reject this plan. No matter how much lipstick you put on a pig, this plan is still a pig.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any more in-person?
That concludes the in-person testifier.
Great, thank you. Are there any individuals on Zoom for testifying?
Aloha, Chair. Yes, we have nine Zoom testifiers. The first testifier is gonna be Aina Aloha Iowane. Could you unmute yourself and turn on your camera?
Any online testifiers?
Hi, Chair, can you hear me?
Ashley, can you hear us?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Aloha.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Chambers, can you hear us?
Chair, just give me one minute to find out why Ashley can't hear us.
Okay.
Thank you. Ashley, can you say something?
Hello, can you hear me?
No.
It appears that she can hear us, but we cannot hear her, so. Ashley, can you try your microphone?
Hello, hello? Test, test.
Chair, I think she's having technical difficulties. If you could, give me about five minutes, I can pull up the registration report here, and I can introduce the testifiers.
Okay.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break due to technical difficulties. Thank you.
Can I ask one of the Zoom testifiers if you can hear us?
I can hear you, but I'm assuming you can't hear me.
Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think.
Oh.
Um, we. Cindy, can you turn on your microphone and let me see if we can hear you?
Can you hear me? Hello?
We cannot hear you.
Can you hear me?
Just give me a moment to troubleshoot this. Ashley, can you hear us now?
I can hear you, can you hear me? Hello?
Ashley, can you say something?
Hello, test, test.
Okay, can you try again, Ash? To say something? There you go. We hear you.
Okay, perfect.
Can we test one of the testifiers to see if we can hear them as well?
Aina Aloha, are you available?
I'm here.
Okay. We can hear you, thank you.
Okay.
But just give us a minute for the Chair to call the meeting to order.
Okay.
Okay, the meeting is back in session.
Aloha, Chair, we have nine Zoom testifiers. The first one is going to be Aina Aloha Iowane. Could you raise your right hand? So I can swear you in, and could you unmute yourself? Thank you. All right, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the Windward Planning Commission?
Aye.
You will have three minutes, and I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds remain. State your name, the town you reside in, and you may begin.
Aloha, my name is Aina Aloha Iowane, and today I'm speaking as the President of Maha, Malamaka Aina, Hanaka Aina, in the homestead of King's Landing in Hilo. Maha is the governing entity representing the beneficiaries on the waitlist stewarding the lands of King's Landing. And today, we asked the Windward Planning Commission to consider a negative recommendation of the Twenty Twenty-Five General Plan. The King's Landing Settlement Plan, Final EA, and Land Designations was approved by the Hawaiian Home Commissioners on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. This historical accomplishment is a multi-generational, forty-five-year-long land solution journey. The beneficiaries of King's Landing have stewarded the lands and rehabilitated as native Hawaiians on the Aina. And for us to see proposed roads that utilize our quiet community road and turns our tranquil Hawaiian homestead community into a zigzag of county roads is very offensive. Image two on page two-seventy-four shows two proposed roads that drive right into the heart of our homestead. These new roads will explode, expose the secluded coastline of King's Landing and will leave it vulnerable to commercialization and exploitation. Maha views these roads as an attack on our livelihood, our community living, and our rehabilitation as beneficiaries. These two new roads will cut through the forests of King's Landing from Railroad and Panaeva all the way down and connect to the coastal road of King's Landing. This will drive traffic directly into our remote homestead and our neighbor of Lele Evi Community Association. Another one of the proposed roads extends our quiet Nene Street right into Lehea County Park, one of Kilkahas' last secluded beach parks, and continues to further intrude into the King's Landing homestead, right into the front porch of my uncle's house. It seems as if these new proposed roads were made by someone outside of this community because it shows no aloha for its residents. The beauty of Lehea and Nene Street, that these roads propose to harm, is its seclusion. Experiences and memories in our community and cultural spaces are what create our pelina and our relationship with Aina. And it is here in these moments that we begin to understand our kuleana and our responsibility, and we build our commitment to our vah'i, because these are the places and the experiences that create the pana and the rhythm of our Hawaii. These new proposed roads running through the homestead of King's Landing will negatively affect and therefore cause irrevocable harm to the rhythm of our community of King's Landing, Lele Evi, and Kilkah, and change it forever. In closing, Maha supports the written testimony and comments provided by the Department of Hawaiian Homelands and its chairman, Kali Watson, dated February twenty-eighth. Specifically, comment one, that highlights the MOU between the county and the.
We have thirty seconds left.
Comment two, that requests the general plan update references included in the DHHL General Plan. Comment three, that there is specific policies that articulate the DHHL plans. Comment five, that counties should not be articulating proposed roads through the homestead, and especially comment four, highlighting the need of the CDP, the Community Development Plan for South Hilo. Mahalo Nui for your time. Aloha.
Thank you for your testimony. The next testifier is gonna be Cindy Evans. Could you unmute yourself and turn on your camera? Hi, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
All right, I'll go ahead and swear you in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the Windward Planning Commission?
I do.
You will have three minutes, and I'll let you know when thirty seconds remain. State your name, the town you reside in, and you may begin.
Thank you. Aloha, Commissioners and Chair. I'm pleased to be with you today and share my, my thoughts on this general plan. I served on the county council and attended some of the general plan outreach, public outreach meetings. I was pretty disturbed that the focus was basically kind of going over, kind of just a presentation of what the outline was and what was included in it. What was bothersome to me is there was no plan, there was no maps, there was no land use, pattern maps. pattern maps on the walls, anywhere for people to go up and see what the vision over the next twenty years is and where the development patterns would be. There was nothing on the walls. And so I felt like the community was um not given the opportunity to actually engage in what their particular community was gonna look like in the next twenty years. Um, that's one of the reasons today I'm, I'm going to recommend an unfavorable recommendation. Um, when I look at general plans, you know, I, I think about like the purpose, the purpose statement, and I went back and read it again. This purpose statement for this new, new proposed draft versus the old general plan that we're working off. And I agree with other comments that it would have been better for the community to wrap their head around what we were doing if we were amending the current plan that we have versus a feeling of just throw it out and start all over again. Really, really hard for the public to wrap our heads around it. The other thing is, by all means, include the Department of Hawaiian Homelands in the plan, at least in- inclusive, because this is about land use development, this is about buildable lands, this is about impacts to roads and water and sewer and watersheds. I mean, everything, we're, we're all together, one big family, why wouldn't it be in there? The other thing I wanted to point out is one section of the plan that I really zeroed in and where my passion is, and that's on road and traffic patterns. Um, I believe there should be something that is a statement on data collection and data management, collection, evaluation. This includes where our commuter routes are, where's our transit route.
Thirty seconds left.
Okay, our bicycle plan, our freight route plan, our emergency evacuation routes. What is our connectivity plans connecting communities? Where do we circulate people within a community? You put, you have to put that all together if you're gonna make some decisions about development patterns and where we approve developments and, and clearly about economy, I'm gonna tell you real quick, key development data, SEDs, we just went through the community economic.
Your three minutes are finished.
And uh, that needs to be included. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time, I wish I had more, thank you, bye.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, the next testifier is Eugene Elmer. Could you turn on your camera and unmute yourself? Eugene Elmer? Can you hear us Eugene?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Okay, um, could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the Windward Planning Commission?
Yes.
You will have three minutes, and I'll let you know when thirty seconds remain. State your name, the town you reside in, and you may begin.
This is Eugene Elmer from South Kona. Um, aloha to those who are genuinely concerned about our keiki's future. I strongly oppose the Hawaii County General Plan twenty forty-five. This agenda, or general plan as some call it, is the opposite of what our community needs. In this twenty forty-five agenda, there is a call for clustering people together. Is that what's really needed? No, it is not. We need multitudes of small organic farms. It is becoming common knowledge that our foods contain harmful chemicals that are causing disease and death to our people. One of those chemicals is called glyphosate, which is found in Roundup, which used to be manufactured by Monsanto and now is under the control of Bayer, a pharmaceutical company. Roundup is banned in many countries and has been proven to cause death and disease. During Harry Kim's administration, the county council passed a resolution to ban Roundup. Then Mayor, Mayor Harry Kim vetoed that resolution after thousands of people expressed their wish to ban the proven to be deadly glyphosate-laden Roundup. Do we the people have a say in our own future? Or are special interest groups like Monsanto, who are in bed with the University of Hawaii and others, the ones who are listened to? We clearly know that this is a good example of the stakeholders that are referred to in your plan. We need to focus on and encourage multitudes of small organic farms with the emphasis on nutrient-dense fruits, vegetables, and livestock. It is obvious from this agenda plan that those pushing this are not farmers. We need diesel tractors and trucks, gas weed eaters and other tools that run off of gasoline to produce and deliver nutrient-dense food that is so desperately needed by our people. As was mentioned by the Hawaiian Brada earlier, you have not notified the people by mail or on the ballot this last November fifth. Like thieves in the night? That may not work out so well.
We have thirty seconds left.
Individuals and families are closely watching the choice you make and know who you are. Ask yourself this question. Do you really think there will be no action taken by the family, by the people and their families as their lands are taken? Are you worried about what repercussions could happen to you and your families? Should you cross that line with other people's families? Please listen to the people in our opposition of the General Hawaii Plan twenty forty-five.
Your three minutes are finished, thank you for your testimony. The next testifier is Martha Stevens. Could you unmute yourself and turn on your camera? Martha, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you see me?
No.
I can't see myself.
It's okay, we can continue.
Um. Let's see. It shows it selected, how about now?
No, not yet, but you can go ahead and continue, I'll go ahead and swear you in.
Okay.
Uh, please raise your right hand.
Mm-hmm.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the Windward Planning Commission?
I swear to tell the truth.
All right, you.
Martha, my name is Martha Stevens.
Hold on, hold on, you will have three minutes, and I'll let you know when thirty seconds remain. State your name, the town you reside in, and you may begin.
My name is Martha Stevens, I reside in Kalia, which is agricultural land. Um. I represent the future of our island for our keiki particularly, because in twenty years, we won't be here, most of us. Or if we are, we're um probably not gonna be able to do much. Um. I, I, I already knew a lot about the plan that's being pushed throughout the whole country. I, I, and I've watched it and I've talked about it to everyone on the commission. Um. This plan came from the First Global Revolution book from the Club of Rome in nineteen ninety-one. It's thirty-four years old, and it's, and in that book, the UN is uh one of the main instigators of putting these, they call schemes, which they are schemes. Um, the carbon plan was created back then in nineteen ninety-one to force alternate energy. Um. The commission was talking about uh revenue and agriculture, why in our, why do we still have the Jones Act? Why is that never taken on? Does anybody know? Um, this plan is anti-life, it's, 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 humanity is the enemy. And you can read all about it in this book, it's a free read. It's in the archives. Um. Carbon credit systems are, are the, the main goal. The reason probably there are absolutely no road plans is they don't want anybody to have any ability to move around. The only people that will be visiting here will come in Lear jets and they will probably have four-wheel-drive limousines. I mean, you really need to understand where this is going, it's, in twenty years, this will happen fast. Um. That book talks about the first approaches for governments to support rural development. Different approaches to rural development. Look at Maui, I, I just happened to look at Maui, I haven't looked at, at their general plan, but they were general plan twenty thirty. I, I really fear, and you should fear too, that if this goes through, we will be getting burned out like they have been. Um, it, it's, it's scary, but they need to first put this infrastructure in.
Yeah, thirty seconds left.
Where they can stop. Start taking lands, and they will take lands, they are, already are. Um. You're either service to self in life or you're service to others in everything you do and all your actions. And you're in a big powerful position right now, I really beg that you reject this plan. It, it's, it's evil, all the way to the core. Completely evil, and you don't have to do a whole lot of research to find things out.
Your three minutes are finished.
I don't know if you guys were coached or something?
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Next testifier, please.
Next testifier is gonna be Dave Webb. David, can you unmute yourself and turn on your camera?
Uh, the host stopped my video, oh. Start my video.
Okay.
Oh, there you go, what do you know? Hey, this is my first use of this cam- of this camera, how about that?
All right, can I go ahead and, can I go ahead and swear you in?
Yes.
Okay, please raise your right hand.
Ah.
Yes, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the Windward Planning Commission?
Yes.
Okay, you will have three minutes, and I'll let you know when thirty seconds remain. State your name, the town you reside in, and you may begin.
Uh, David Webb, I'm in uh Puna, uh Hawaii. Um, uh, while uh, actually, I wanted to talk about uh what was mentioned at the very beginning of this meeting about uh chapter six of the plan. But uh first, I wanted to start at the beginning, I, I think a big issue is there was insufficient uh public notification for the fact that the scope of the plan was increased by an order of magnitude. I mean, instead of being just for land use, it's now for uh, instead of just physical, it's now physical, economic, and sociocultural well-being, you know? You know, as an example, it suggests uh placing requirements on people's catchment tanks. I mean, for our own good, of course, but it does more harm by, you know, impinging on our freedoms, there, you know, we're supposed to have individual rights. Anyway, um. How many people might have heard of these planning meetings but assumed they were still for just about land use and so really didn't show up? I think they need to be notified that the scope is much bigger than it, than it used to be so that they can take an interest in it. Now, um, uh, the other, another problem is, is that the document, four hundred pages long, is just so abstract and excessively wordy, unnecessarily so. I, I don't know who's ever read the whole thing and understands the whole thing, you know, like, I mean, just starting right out, like, um, the very first, the very first line, you know, uh, the introduction. You know, for uh, it's, for example, it'll say uh, um, you know, navigating growth, a rooted heritage, integrate sustainable balance, environmental stewardship, community equity, I mean, a couple of these words are defined in the glossary, like environmental stewardship, and some of them aren't. But by the time you look up the definition of every word, uh, you know, and then get back to where you left off, and then you got four hundred pages of this, it's, it's really, it's really a, a tou- a tough call. You, it, you, you could get a PhD in something easier than understanding this whole thing. And then in fact, that entire first section uh of the introduction, before you get to section one point one, could just be uh removed, the whole page, two pages. Replace it with one.
Your thirty seconds left.
Say, the plan is of, by, and for the residents who are the stakeholders in the well-being of the county. That's it. Now, at the end of that section, before section one point one, uh, it, it, they, they do show a picture of implementation strategies, and it mentions continuously engaging the community, meaning the stakeholders, I would hope, and uh, and regularly assessing the implementation, meaning uh how well it is achieving its goals. Well, those, those.
Your three minutes are finished, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next testifier is April Lee. April, could you uh unmute yourself and turn on your camera?
Well, it says I was disabled by the host. Can you let me turn it on?
Did you get it?
Hmm, I don't think I can see myself. Let me try again. It's, I've got my camera supposed to be on. Are you sure I'm on with you?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you just fine. Let me go to video settings.
We can go ahead and continue.
Um. Okay.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the Windward Planning Commission?
I do.
You will have three minutes, and I'll let you know when thirty seconds remain. State your name, the town you reside in, and you may begin.
Thank you, my name is April Lee. I'm in Havi, that's North Kohala. And I am very much uh thanking the chairman, um, Mr. Daniele III, and you volunteer planning commissioners, and uh saying aloha to the attorneys. Uh, I've spent seventeen point four hours prior to this meeting testifying on this plan. And there's a good reason. Because I'm part of civil defense and I'm part of the emergency planning for this, and I can tell you, we really have not funded in this plan, that purpose, which I'm, I'm not gonna mention it as a, a vital concern because there's so many people that are suffering on this island that until we have a major disaster, probably nobody's gonna do anything. That's what I've seen in the past. The first thing I think, we cannot assess this plan ever unless we have an audited financial statement of what happens before and after this plan is instituted, and I think it must be put in the plan. We must have those vendors, of those stakeholders, those contractors, even anybody that works in volunteer basis that gets some kind of bonus or remuneration, we need to know what that is because I've been in this trying to fix shelters, emergency shelters, and I've seen the nepotism, and I think we need to stop it. We could really do a great thing with this plan if we could. So I also say that there's wonderful words, the director of planning, Mr. Ono, we have no intention. Uh, it's an unofficial conclusion, and these kinds of things are in this plan, which definitely, I agree with everyone, this was a mag card, that's the fifties word, sixties word, but it was a data-processed plan that was taken for our island, and we are absolutely better and more special because we have the greatest race. I was born here s- almost seventy-five years ago. And I'm not Hawaiian, but let me tell you, I think the Hawaiian is absolutely the spiritual leader and, and possibly of the entire planet. I mean, I love the Maoris, I have a bunch of indigenous friends, and we have sixty-two that meet with us online, but we need to make sure we protect that. And I do think that we're not protecting our farmers because I just got a bill that said if I don't make profit, then I have to pay thirty-one hundred and fifteen dollars more per year to you, the county, for what? I haven't seen any uh accounting of the.
We have thirty seconds left.
We need things like uh our repairs before we go into new stuff. Our um, you know, renewable energy, the transition increases costs, and these rapidly shifting renewables raise electricity and all this stuff, and I think we need to be very concerned about our use of the word climate change because scientifically, and I have two degrees, it is not logical. We also have tourism management that is really reducing tourin- tourism's footprint, but it's.
Your three minutes are finished, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next testifier is Josephine Kelly EPO. Can you unmute yourself and turn your camera on? Josephine Kelly EPO? Hi, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, um, could you please raise your right hand so I can swear you in? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the Windward Planning Commission?
Yes.
You will have three minutes, and I'll let you know when thirty seconds remain. State your name, the town you reside in, and you may begin.
Okay, Josephine Kelly EPO, and I live in Kai Loa Kona. Um, although the Aho'apua'as concepts are integrated into the chapters of the general plan twenty forty-five, I strongly feel that an entire standalone chapter should be written up on the Aho'apua'as system. This system was used by my ancestors for thousands of years, the system. The system treated the land, air, and water with respect, and it kept the land, air, and water prist- in pristine condition prior to foreigner's contact. The standalone chapter, Aho'opoa'as chapter, will educate everyone who reads or uses this document, and it will fortify the Aho'opoa'as concept as it is used within this plan. Okay, um, I come, I come from South Hilo. I lived in, uh, Department of Hawaiian Home Lands in Keokah and Panaeva. And I agree with what my cousin Ms. Warrington and others have said regarding the CDP for South Hilo. High-density urban development plans for the Banyan Drive area and downtown Hilo sure sounds like South Hilo is slated for a fifteen-minute smart city. That's exactly what a smart city is. And, uh, in case anyone doesn't know this, that's where Lahaina is headed. That's where Lahaina and Maui is headed. That's Governor Green's plans. He had the plans in 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 place before the fire, just to let everybody know. Um, fifteen-minute smart cities do not belong in Hawaii County. We don't want to be tracked, traced, or surveyed, just like they do in Communist China. And please, please work on the South Hilo CDP before you push through this twenty forty-five plan. Um, finally, let's. I would like to remind you that although the planning, uh, department spent nine years on the General Plan twenty forty-five, according to the numbers provided by the previous planning director, Zendo Kern, less than thirteen thousand people participated in this process. That's thirteen thousand out of two hundred and eight thousand population of Hawaii County, or less than six percent of the population. This is very, very disturbing. It means that most of our residents are clueless about what will happen to their future. I would like to suggest that you recommend an extension for more public input. I would like to re- suggest that you recommend an extension for more public input on this twenty forty-five plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Next testifier is Julie Shas. Can you go ahead and unmute yourself and turn your camera on?
Okay.
Julie? Julie Shas, did you wanna testify? Okay, next testifier is gonna be Shaili. Shay- Shailin? Shailin, did you wanna testify today?
Yes, I do.
Okay, can you go ahead and turn your camera on?
Uh, let's see.
It's okay, we can continue without. Um, could you raise your right hand? Uh, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the Windward Planning Commission? Shailin, can you hear us? Okay, well, we'll move on to the next testifier, Marian Gershon. Marian, can you turn on your? Yes, okay.
Uh, let's see. Hey, there we go.
Okay, let me go ahead and swear you in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the Windward Planning Commission?
I do. Thank you.
You will have three minutes and I'll let you know when thirty seconds remain. State your name, the town you reside in, and you may begin.
Uh, my name is Marian Gershon. I reside in Naléhu. And I wanted to start off by thanking you all for for your time and, um, your concern a- around what's what's happening here. Um, you know, the final decision on this is gonna be made by the council. Um, you guys are the representatives of the people. And again, we're in gratitude for your willingness to be allowed to speak for us. Uh, but the council is gonna need legally valid reasons um, and serious input from this body and the other planning, the other planning commission to even start to seriously and thoughtfully consider what is being attempted here. So, you know, it, so I think the recommendations to hold on to the two thousand five plan can can be, um, th- they're valid reasons for this. The the pl- this document states that, uh, the bulk of the authority for this plan comes from the CDPs and not yet left out the largest population center on this island. And and you know, there was time, 'cause in twenty nineteen, there was one document that went through the public meetings that was developed by the planning department and got input. I think it was about four thousand people looked at that document. And then in twenty twenty-three, a new document appears that's called a final draft, which doesn't even resemble the previous document. This wouldn't be a problem, except that that the previous document went through all those rounds. And so the people that went to those meetings would assume that would be the body of 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 this final draft. Also, you don't footnote and refer to it as a separate document if, you know, it's the same thing. These two, these are two separate documents created by two separate departments. That's the valid reason to to at the very least, put the brakes on this. I, so revising the two thousand five plan, where the public can clearly see where things are go- that's a living document. You know, and then if Oscar wants to do a a document where they wanna make recommendations and guidelines to be, you know, considered, I think that's a fantastic idea. But this plan is legally binding. The, I will read from.
Your thirty seconds left.
The purpose and authority of the general plan. The council shall enact zoning subdivision and such other ordinances which shall contain the necessary provisions to carry out the purpose of the general plan. That's not ambiguous. There's nothing in this that's ambiguous. And if this passes and we have to claw things back, it's gonna be a tedious, slow, and self-defeating process. So please represent us as as we are, what what we're giving you.
Three minutes are finished.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, Shaili, did you get your phone to work? Shailin?
I I, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. I have a new phone and I can't figure all this stuff out. I'm sorry.
It's okay, we can continue without video. Um, can I go ahead and swear you in?
Yes.
Okay, please raise your right hand.
Mm-hmm.
Or affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the Windward Planning Commission.
Yes, I do.
Okay, you will have three minutes and I'll let you know when thirty seconds remain. State your name, the town you reside in, and you may begin.
My name is Shailin Fahy. I, uh, live in volcano Hawaii. Uh, I have to agree with most everyone that testified today that I highly disagree with this general plan as written. Uh, I feel that it will take our, it will further take away our human rights. And also, this plan has a lot of jargon, which mimics the New World Order and the climate change agenda. Climate change can be used against us, as we've seen in Lahaina. They just say, oh, that was a wildfire, climate due to climate change. All of us sitting at home watching and in this room know that this is being used against us. And not just here in Hawaii, this is a world matter. We see the United Nation agenda coming across the world, just like we saw COVID. And w- we will find out a lot in the future about COVID not being a hundred percent real the way that they portrayed it to be. The failure to notify the community does not mean, uh, if they're not, this, if the whole community as a whole is not saying no to this agenda, it's because they do not know about it. And we will not sit here and accept no consent given as consent to this plan. This is why, you know, if you can get a, uh, 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 to pay us the income tax, the property tax, everything by mailing it to our post office boxes, you can certainly get this information notified to every homeowner in Hawaii. Is the end game here, as Klaus Schwab says, you will own nothing and be happy? Who are the stakeholders here? Is it the property owners or is it private, uh, in, uh, company owners, uh, that already own the world? I wanna see the definition here that a stakeholder is me, the property owner of my private property. I own my property a hundred percent. I don't have a mortgage. I don't have to pay rent. And I am a stakeholder holder here in Hawaii of this general plan, and I highly oppose it. Thank you for for your time.
Thank you for your testimony, Chair. That's all the Zoom testifiers we have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you for all the testimonies, uh, today. Uh, as always, we we always appreciate your feedback. Okay, uh, we'll first open the floor for any questions the commissioners have for staff or the director. Commissioners? I got a question. Um, so notifications. Could you clarify, Director? How, um, how this was led to the public?
Hello, Commissioners. Um, the public notice, um, was done several different ways for this plan and, um, its efforts. Um, starting with, we did newspaper, took out newspaper ads. Um, we posted across all of our, um, social media with the planning department. We did individual mailings to the property owners who had a proposed change to the map to a natural or a conservation designation. Janice, do you have any other? Sorry, I wasn't part of that particular outreach, so I'm just trying to recall what the different.
So there's, there's also this service that we do called List Serve. And every time we've done a, um, outreach, we've asked people that wanna be notified of any of our particular, um, applications or processes or meetings that they be placed on this, um, mailing that we do. List Serve, correct? That's the name of it.
Yeah, and this was agendized, um, many times with the Community Development Plan Action Committee, uh, as well.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair.
What did the review or the update to this general plan begin? What year?
Two thousand and fifteen.
So it started in two thousand fifteen, and from there, what channels did you folks utilize to let the public know? Newspaper, mailings, list service?
Yes, that's the mailing list that planning directors, um, responded to. We also had, um, many, um, meetings around the island.
Okay, I was looking at this. So I noticed you said two thousand fifteen. There's a picture in the GDP, the GP plan that's dated twenty nineteen. Um, but then in March of twenty nineteen, right through early parts of twenty twenty-two, there was COVID, so everything was pretty much shut down and everybody was disconnected. So the only means of connection were through social media platforms. Um, I went and I cross-referenced with Instagram. None of the county platforms were started till twenty twenty-two at the earliest. Do you have a sample mailer or newspaper clipping that was sent out to the public so they could have been made aware? Um, posters at the airport as families who relocate from elsewhere come here and was, is there any proof of that stuff?
Thank you, Commissioner, Vice Chair. Um, so the twenty nineteen draft that was released, and again, there was lots of, um, notice in the newspaper and various places and public meetings held for that draft. The public comment period closed in September, I believe. Uh, oh, October. It closed in October of twenty nineteen. That was prior to the pandemic, um, happening. So that the time period between, uh, when the public comment period closed on that draft and to to this, um, recommended draft, that time period, there was no outreach happening because the, um, comments that were received on the twenty nineteen draft were being reviewed and incorporated into the recommended changes. So there was no, there was already not gonna be outreach during that time period.
Twenty nineteen until this being brought here to commission. There was no community outreach, no community meetings held. So the mass majority of the community meetings were being, were between twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen, so there was no social media.
There was, there was social media.
There was social media platforms.
Yeah.
Um, where people.
We have a County of Hawaii Planning Department Facebook I know that was utilized during that time period.
Please just, uh, one, one at a time, please.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
So again, the County of Hawaii Planning IG started in March of twenty twenty-three. That's the first and earliest post I found. So, I kinda feel like my hands are tied behind my back, because when the community's telling me there's a lack of communication, but I have nothing to be fed up with and say, hey, no, my county did this, my county did that, but there's this huge gap of communication that wasn't translated to our community so they could be there and be present. And this meeting could feel, huh, gosh, I don't know how much more I could say. I feel like my hands are tied, like. Twenty fifteen, twenty nineteen, no communication, unless you were in tune with the county, the newspaper, which now population has growned and now we're more so- social media inclined?
Uh, so, a- and I'm, and I'm not gonna suggest that social media is the only platform. But we did have our, our channels, um, were active during that time. And then, um, there was a, like, a rebranding that happened to create additional channels for our community development plans that happened, um, during what you're, uh, referring to. So there was older posts, um, from those channels during that twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen period. And then again, just, um, highlighting that during, um, all that outreach, which is also on our, um, planning department website, but speaks to how the plan was created. Um, there's, you know, thousands and thousands of comments as as you've heard.
Okay, you cannot speak at this portion of the meeting.
You can, do you folks, or can you find a newspaper clipping? Can you folks, or can you find a newspaper clipping of the ad that was made for the public to be made aware of this between twenty-five, twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen?
Yes, I can provide that to you.
And the mailer.
Okay, this meeting is gonna end promptly at noon. We have five minutes. Um, I have another question. I don't know if you got Commissioner DeLucio, go.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Um, just because it's come up a couple of times on the CDP for South Hilo, um, I'm just not clear on, because it, clear on the fact that is there one or is there none? I guess that's the question I'm asking.
I can answer that, Chair. So the, uh, Commissioner DeLucio, there is a community development plan for Hilo. Uh, it was the first community development plan adopted. Um, and we, as a planning department, still utilize that, uh, particular, um, document, but it is in need to be updated and this administration has been, uh, in, uh, talks with, uh, the current council member, um. Obviously, we are, um, going through the general plan update, uh, so that is taking quite a bit of our um, time with the division that works on these particular types of updates. Additionally, we're gonna be doing, um, the, we've been working on for the past two years, uh, comprehensive zoning code and subdivision code updates that will follow the general plan. And then we will be looking at, uh, updating the community development plans. Uh, in reference to the presentation earlier, it talked about the different phases of, uh, the general plan to implement, uh, until we amend the plan again. Uh, phase two talked about updating, uh, the community development plans.
Thank you, Director. Commissioner Perrin, you have another question?
I have a question regards to land use. How important is it to update the land use development plan versus utilizing the one that was set back already in, what, two thousand five? So again, how important is it to update the land use development plan versus using the one that we already have established and working off of that one and fine tuning that one versus updating it in this plan?
How important is it? Uh, that land use pattern allocation guide map was done twenty years ago. And so, um, there are new designations that have been created um, that fit better, uh, than some of the designations we have. For example, natural, uh, recreation, these are all new designations. We've removed some of the designations. Uh, one of them is resort nodes. We no longer have that designation. Uh, and additionally, taking a fresh look around the island, um, and being able to make sure that, um, we wanna see, uh, growth where we wanna see it and to be able to minimize growth where we do not wanna see it. Um, I, I know that we had, uh, we have a document that talks about how much this land use pattern allocation guide map had decreased density and it was, it was pretty significant overall comparably to the allowable density in the previous plan. So this plan focused on really fine tuning where density, uh, would be located, uh, in the future.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, do I have a motion to continue tomorrow?
I motion to continue this conversation tomorrow.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Perrin, seconded by Commissioner DeLucio. Uh, I need a verbal, all in favor. I, okay, so we will continue this meeting tomorrow at nine AM. Thank you, everyone, uh, for, uh, participating in this.
The closed caption transcript will be terminated shortly and those who wish to see the transcript should do so now.